Yeah, it's like, I think it's funny, but you can walk out. A little bit of checks.
Yeah. So it'll be a good one.
Great, thank you. Um, we have a forum, we have six of us here. Um, I want to just make one change to the agenda. We are not going to be taking up the bylaws of the trustee handbook tonight. We decided that was too much for this meeting and for us. Um, so we've tentatively scheduled that for the twenty seventh of June and Anita and David, we could confirm that tomorrow. Um, public comment. Let's see, anyone in the room or anyone online? So, um, Mr. Seder, why don't we go to you for updates from legal counsel?
Um, everything is moving nicely. Uh, I think most of you know the county board of commissioners approved the interim I G eight this morning. And the city will do that on Wednesday tomorrow. Um, and then, and then David has talked to the city about making some payments for us. Between now and the time we get a banking account open. And they are willing to expend up to seventy five thousand dollars. And that would be used for, uh, the mountain states employers council membership, finance consultants, and information technology and facilities. So I suspect we need to put together a contract to do that.
See, that is, can you just repeat that again?
Seventy five thousand.
Yep.
And it would be used for mountain states. Finance consultant.
Finance and IT, okay.
Information technology.
Okay.
Beginning.
And facilities or IT?
Yes, but, so therefore consultant.
Okay, okay.
Is it seventy five thousand each or a total of something like that?
Total.
Okay.
I don't believe that actually.
Yeah, all right.
But hopefully that will be enough to cover half upfront if that's what they're asking for, right?
I don't think we can cover the entire membership for, um. But membership, they won't work for us. So we need to get that done soon. And, uh, finance. The IT. Facilities, we have to scope for, we haven't got anybody that said they're one bit yet. Um, and IT, uh, we don't have a. We have to scope for.
Yeah, great. But you said you do have a finance consultant?
Yeah, we do have talks in three lead this one. It's turned everything around. If you're agreeable, that we should have a motion. Authorizing this contract with the city. And of course, we're going to end up reimbursing.
Okay. Well, I'd move that we, um, authorize a contractor to the city of Boulder for up to seventy five thousand dollars to bring on board, um, four consultants. Mountain States Employers Council, a finance consultant, an IT consultant, and a facilities consultant if possible. With the understanding that this money will be reimbursed as part of the operating cost for twenty twenty three. I'll second. Second.
So the city will pay the consultants and will?
We'll follow those new processes we do with the city.
Okay.
Money just has to come from somewhere.
Okay.
And so we set aside a general fund that will be a project account.
Okay.
We'll pay for that until such time as we have a checking account.
Okay.
May or will the mountain states will send, see how soon that may. So if that's the case, mountain states is.
Okay.
And we have an update on the banking situation.
Okay, okay.
That's it for you? Or you got more?
Yep, we should take a vote on that motion.
Oh, yes, okay. Done. Anita, can you vote before we go?
That's at least quarter of money.
All right, we'll six.
Bye.
Cheers.
And yeah, that's it for me, there's a lot.
All the favorite motion, Anita, I assume you're in favor?
Yes.
There's a lot going on, but for now, that's it from me and, uh,
Okay, great.
Really pleased with the way things.
Great, wonderful. Okay, Sylvia, do you want to use our financial policy?
Sure, so this is just obviously the start of what will eventually become a very extensive, um, group of policies. Uh, but this, what we, um, discussed is that we really need to just have, um, this language in place regarding authorization of expenditures and then, um, signatories. So that is why you only see a very small, um, section of a policy titled Financial Policies.
Okay. But you know.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, so, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm gonna assume you've all read it, um, unless you want me to generally summarize what it says.
I did read it, I'm just looking for it.
And what we did at the beginning was we just kind of have a little bit of an introductory paragraph, just generally explaining that, um, you know, these policies are being implemented in twenty twenty three as we're forming the district. Um, and just kind of generally explaining that, you know, obviously we don't have every single section or, um, um, type of policy language that we will eventually have, um, only because it's a work in progress. And so, um, it will, it will change over time and all of those, um, other sections would be added, um, later on.
And we have, um, two proposed amendments since we circulated this. Um, one amendment on, on the line that says the director is authorized to expand up to thirty thousand dollars. It starts in twenty twenty three. The director is authorized to expand. We just wanted to add per expenditure to clarify that that's not a ceiling, it's per expenditure. And then based on communications, the bank who's looking for specific wording in the resolution for setting up the account. We had some, an additional line to add. Can, can you read that back to us? I know you jotted it down. If not, I can.
They want to, uh, so we already had, uh, who the account signers are. They want at quarter entity level signers who will have authority to open and close accounts and add and remove signatures. They add and remove signatures.
And so we want to, to add language that said, basically saying future, and I don't know if we need the in future, but that the secretary treasurer and the president are authorized to open and close accounts and to change signatories on the bank cards. However, we could say that.
Johnny, should we? That's for the bank's purposes? So in, in terms of changing signers, they need to know who's authorized to do that. So that should be in the resolution. The resolution is what they need to know that you, that the board acted.
Yeah.
And maybe it shouldn't be in the policy because I don't think the word policy is to allow the two trustees to change the signature.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that.
In the resolution, okay.
Yeah, I think that I've done this before. I, it should be in your resolution, it'll have to go forward resolution.
And then, I guess when we update the financial policy, we will need to include that because the financial policy is currently written as just for this year and means us as people to that to officer positions for future.
That language would be in the resolution.
Yep.
Now, or?
Uh, see, does that mean? Other questions or comments on the financial policy? I think the resolution for the policy, right?
Wait, so one change to add.
Expenditure.
Did you? So, um, I guess we have this, um, but we're still using the city policy to sign these contractors. Um, or will David be authorized to sign to, I guess he will be authorized to tell the city to expend the money, I guess? Are there two policies?
Yes, that's what Kim was asking there, so I have to email back to the city to say that this is authorized. I don't think I can not do something.
Got it.
Financial policy, yeah.
So the financial policy will give you authorization to tell the city on behalf of the district to expend the money?
I think we just did, offered David to tell the city we would spend the money. This policy allows David to spend.
Our money, okay, thank you.
Yeah. He needs that in order to go forward. Okay. So do we? And so to prove the financial policy is amended with language per expenditure out?
I motion to approve that.
Thank you.
If the financial policy hasn't been there.
It will look so good in minutes.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Well, I guess, I was trying to.
Go for it.
Okay, me, I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. And then the bank account, do you want to do this again on this, Sylvia?
Sure, so one of the pieces that we were trying to put into place right away was to, um, open our bank account. And, um, if you recall, um, we had a little memo from Kim explaining some of the, um, requirements that we had to meet and that the bank that we chose had to meet. And so, um, we took a, a, a look at a couple of different issues. And after thinking about, you know, stability of banks at this time and what the legal requirements were, including, um, needing to be, uh, is it a, um, a, is it a, I'm trying to remember the first word, unauthorized public depository? Is that the right word? Yeah, so including meeting that, uh, uh, requirement, um, thinking about what the staff had conveyed to us in terms of, um, what, um, bank seemed like the best choice. And then also thinking about the ease of transition as well as the experience of the bank in working with districts like library districts. Um, after that assessment, um, we are recommending that the, um, the board of trustees, um, open a bank account with J P Morgan. And they're currently, um, banking for the city and, um, the county. And we had one meeting with, with them, um, last week and it was, it was really helpful. Um, they're, the folks that would be working with us are super knowledgeable. They, um, they answered all of our questions, they've got us all lined out, we've already submitted, started the process. So that is our recommendation at this time to, um, make J P Morgan our bank.
And I would just say I had no idea how complicated this is, just having a bank account for a local government.
Right.
So I have just a couple of questions. One, so what were the recommendations from which staff? And then who did you meet with?
Um, we, um, we understood that the staff, um, Jennifer, for example, um, was, uh, very in favor of J P Morgan. Um, we wanted to take that into account. And then we met with David May at J P Morgan.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, had a meeting last week.
And who's the we? You and? The governance.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and so David May heads up a local government section within their core section in J P Morgan Chase.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so this bank, according to them, is the only one that actually has a government, a government operation in all fifty states. And they have a lot of behind the scenes things that seem like they'll be very helpful. For example, there's a purchase card consortium that was started by Douglas County that they can help us get into that helps both with best practices and even gives rebates. Um, they identified things, Jennifer asked the question about, um, vendors charging fees and they can actually vet vendors to see which ones charge fees and which ones don't to try and help us with things like that on taking P cards. So they really seem to be very service oriented. Um, they have folks on call over the U Cams as well as these two who are dedicated, um, to us. So it seems like we're going to get really good, um, service and certainly their service today has been super.
And is it, uh, do they have a physical office here?
I have a physical office in Denver. I don't think they have a physical office in Boulder anymore. Um, part of the challenge in getting the bank account started is that they are seeing so many refugees from smaller banks, given the smaller banks going under. He said they actually had to hire a hundred temps to handle the setup. Again, this is not just in corporate, this is across the board. Um, so that's what got us down this road of can we get the city to help us get started? Because we don't know for sure if we're going to be able to get a bank account until September or third of July.
Right. Hmm, and that's assuming that we get the ball rolling now, right, right? Wow.
Yeah, it was an educational week.
Yeah, definitely.
I've heard that these bigger banks, they have all the, you know, resources that we need to kind of, you know, do as opposed to what some of the smaller banks don't, you know, have to, you know, you'd hope to go with something local or something like that, but they just don't have the, the ability to, to handle this type of.
That's what we learned.
Yeah, and this amount of money for a regional bank is probably quite a bit, I don't know what they have now, but, you know, a lot of money for a regional bank.
Well, and for me, like, just the expertise that David had, I mean, the things he were, he was just throwing all of these questions at us and I think except for Jennifer knew what he was talking about, but Johnny and I were like. We, yes, we were writing things down madly. So, I mean, that expertise really made me feel reassured that, you know, we're not gonna, um, we're gonna be off on a good, a good footing with that bank, so. Oh, okay, well, that's good, because I, I was like, Jennifer knows what he's talking about. Yeah.
So how long has the city been with J P Morgan Chase?
So the, actually, I didn't find this with the city.
Yeah, you'd probably.
What's the other one?
Oh, J P Morgan Key.
Key.
J P Morgan, one of the competitive, you know, the city does a rigorous process. Thinking that it's valuable to, to see something.
Right.
We've been very happy.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, and it was kind of emphasized to us and, you know, it could have just been salesmanship, but it will probably be a bit easier just to transition to them, um, you know, since they have already, the, they're doing banking, you know, with, on the library side, they know what, what those expenditures are, so. Might be helpful.
Okay, so I think we have this time a written out recommended motion if somebody wants to make that. Do we do the motion and then amend?
Either way.
Then the motion?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, David.
I move the board of trustees approve resolution twenty twenty three dash six dash one, a resolution authorizing the treasurer to open bank and other depository accounts and approving signers for the accounts as amended.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Sam.
Uh, what it, can someone explain the language of the monthly accounting and audit will be discussed later, but may simply consist of copying the treasure on bank statements? Is that just like a placeholder to say we're gonna do something in this area? Or what, why is that there and phrase that way?
That, where does that language?
It's right above the recommended motion language.
Oh, I think that was just an explanation that, um, the law requires us to do this report to the treasurer. So I was just saying, it may be a similar, just providing bank statements. It's not part of the motion. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, yeah, it's just really, um, light oversight, I guess.
No, you're right.
A little bit of concern, but there won't be very many transactions right now, so I guess it's okay.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Good question.
Okay, and so, um, I would like to move to amend the motion to include the language that Kim is going to read.
And that language would probably go in Roman numeral two. A new sentence, the treasurer and president are also authorized to open and close accounts and change authorized signers. And we could quit after approval of the board of trustees.
Uh, do we, would I say that again or do we just second it?
You just second.
Second. I didn't write it all down.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sam, is that an aye on your end?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and so just one other thing while we're talking about policies. If you had a chance to look at the table of contents for the Douglas County, um, policies that's kind of following, or alternatively on the state library website, there's a list of recommend, a lot of them. The library has most of those already and the city probably has the ones that the library doesn't have, they'll be city. So, you know, our thought is we starting with those, trying to carry those over as much as possible rather than starting from scratch. And so I had a thought about maybe a way to include the library commission. I wonder if the commission could basically do an inventory of policies and see which ones, in their opinion, can just transition over as they are and which ones will need us to do some amendments. And that might be something that then we could engage with them about later in the year if they're interested in that. I think the transition of policies is probably going to be December-ish timeframe, late in the year.
That's exactly the problem. There's some that will have to change.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I know they've been wanting to be involved and that's their bailiwick, so I wondered if it was worth taking that to the commission and seeing if that was something that they would be interested in helping with.
That would be really helpful.
Yeah, it would be really helpful.
Okay, great. All right, Mr. Farnett. Mountain States.
Yeah, so Mountain States Employment Council, I don't know how you do really, but it was recommended to us by half a dozen library districts that we talked to. They are a full service, uh, H R and, uh, we have, uh, around eleven, uh, term. Uh, they provide various levels of, um, membership, which provide for everything from, you know, um, the things that you need them for immediately, which is filling out the staff contract and benefits package. They do offer, um, recommendations and a list of consultants, as well as they cheer us for shopping around for H R benefits. Uh, some brokers essentially, of course, they work through them. Um, they provide training. Analysis of compensation data, they do benchmark surveys, they analyze the survey, they're planning on bringing up the staff. Uh, they have some package. They will begin work with us from the moment we, uh, hopefully sign this membership. Um, so the initial cost of that membership is twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. They come highly rated and I've had a couple of conversations with people on the phone, which again, they were very knowledgeable. You know, the, the difficulty for us is the timeframe, right? So we have to approve a budget by, uh, package. I think there will be additional costs, they have a number of services that they provide on hourly basis for these all these. I would need to nail ourselves up, but that won't be until probably August or, you know, see the other, that employee, some packages. The handbook is actually part of the initial membership, so they will do that as well. But, um, yes, I'd highly, I'd like to recommend that we, uh, approve Mountain States Council membership to become a member as soon as this other policy is, I email back and say that the policy just, the city will obviously go for it, but maybe not twelve thousand eight hundred dollars or something. I can certainly, I mean, as we want to lay out the scope of all what we have to do and get.
And this is a one-year membership?
It's a one-year membership. We may, after the first year, scale back, uh, scale back to a lower level of membership. It requires support of, that's something we don't yet either, right? So they offer, you know, there's a lot of companies that offer fractional services now, this is, this is what they're, it's H R. Something I think where it can be helped is, and the packages are applied for. They also work through labor. No, that we already have. They can have those conversations with them as well. Expert to talk to, uh, staff that there's interest in it personally.
Is this a private, is this a co-op or is it a private company or is it?
You know.
It is a private company.
Private company.
It's a private company.
Okay.
See, it sounds like it's kind of public.
Like or a co-op.
Yeah.
The name or it is.
Sort of attention.
They're in multiple states.
Okay.
Not just in Colorado, Mountain States Employment Council, they, they gone, right? Provide, I think, thirty, yeah, thirty nine.
Yeah, could I just add my recommendation for the employers council? The last nonprofit I managed, um, we were members, we didn't pay as much as that, but, um, in addition to the consultants and the trainings and all the benefits David described, um, we, we, I had to deal with a couple of really difficult personnel situations and, um, their attorneys were on call, uh, and available to me, like, almost around the clock. One was particularly difficult, one situation, and, uh, they totally had my back. Um, and I don't know what I would have done without them, so I'm a strong yay for joining the employers council.
Wow, that's a testimonial. I like that, yeah.
Do we need to approve this or, I mean, we've already approved the budget and he's authorized to spend the money, you know?
Yeah, you are authorized to spend up to thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I don't think, you feel like, uh, thank you for challenging.
Well, I think we defined some of the earlier rules that we have. Come back to you with any consultants who you're hiring.
Uh, that's true, yeah.
Generally discover the work, which is why, although I have discovered the work and the cost from the financial consultant, I will, I will bring that back next year. And you could take part in discovering the real problems mostly. With the exception of the H R consultants this one, whether consultants would be ready for currently, simply for you to have independent verification of different data around the I G eight negotiations.
Yeah.
The H R consultant will be for, I think, building out that very important milestone that shows putting a draft in front of you by the end of this, uh, unemployment.
Do you feel like this, is this the employment consultant or is this just one of the, more of like a legal?
No, it's both, it's both employment and, and also legal services. So they, anything having to do with paper.
H R.
Uh, H R, stuff, they will cover.
Okay.
But yeah, they will be able to help us analyze the survey, they will, uh, staff, be able to get our package for us. Uh, they will probably offer further consulting to shop around for, um,
Yeah.
healthcare benefits, but, you know, it's not that complicated. There's only like three games in the state of Colorado, so it's like, we should be able to turn that health package around. We should cover.
So obviously, it is our H R.
That's what I was trying to think of, yeah.
Yeah, they, they will function as your H R department up until such time as we can make a decision as to whether or not we are going to hire H R staff.
Yeah.
Good to have that off and running. Okay, um, agenda item eight, consider approval of contract to engage the director of the public. Go to pick a partner. We don't think there's any changes.
There's been no, yeah, please. For the last meeting.
I'll read it again unless somebody else. So, we're gonna, I move, uh, the board of trustees authorize the president and secretary of the board of trustees to sign and offer the contract. to serve as director of the Boulder Public Library to, district, to David Farnin in the form presented with a five-day deadline to respond.
Perfect.
Okay, any further discussion?
This, the, um, I can't see, yeah, until approved on June 15th, so I did see it was on the consent agenda, the IDA, so once that's signed, you can ask it us. Second.
Yeah, Sylvia seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
One step closer.
One small step. Step B one.
Yes.
Okay, now, consider approval of intergovernmental agreement.
There were a couple of changes in the conference about this last particular, uh, we learned that the the cost of the election is $37,000. Previous meeting, I thought it would be, I think.
Thirty-four thousand?
Thirty-four thousand.
Seventeen.
Uh, so when I got, when I got that number, I thought, why don't we just plug it in there? I didn't, I don't know. So that paragraph changed from saying, you know, we'll, we grow. Thirty-four thousand, so that's it.
Well, yeah, and it's, that was, that was, it's best when you do the version that went to the county.
Well, it's such a long ballot. It was some issue.
Yeah.
And then the Board of County Commissioners this morning asked, right there, they're moving, um, asking the attorney if that was the right number, she confirmed it, so it's lovely. The other item that changed substantially was, um, numbers three point three, three point four. So, in the, the version that you saw, there was a listing of items that we were going to reimburse the city for. And there were numbers attached to that. Uh, we took the numbers out first, and then went back and forth with the city, and ultimately, I think a couple of the trustees wanted to just remove the entire provision, so we did that. Then went back and forth a couple more times with the city, and ended up with the language you see there, which essentially says, there are these categories that we intend to reimburse for, and we'll figure out the amount in time. It's just a much simpler process, not locked into anything. That will be negotiated, and we did. And other than that, it's pretty much the same. And this is the version that was approved by the county commissioner.
Ah, okay.
There it is. Let me see.
After we get done, after this is signed, will you start right away negotiating the new, the full IDA, or what?
I was gonna talk to you about that, yeah, I think, I think so.
Yeah.
I think, uh,
Absolutely, good luck.
I think I have a copy, copy, that David Gare sent you, that has things that were included, John, you probably know, from some committees, from the city, and I thought I would just start with that. Go through it, make changes, bring that to you when you're ready for it. And then we'll make the first proposal to the, let's start with that. Because we know that there are things that they, they just thought they
So, does someone want to make a motion to approve this interim IDA?
Sure, but I note that there isn't a place for the secretary to sign, so I'm not going to include that in my motion. So I'm gonna move the board of trustees approve the interim intergovernmental agreement as presented and authorize the president of the board of trustees to sign and deliver the signed copy to the city and the county for execution.
And I read this as to authorize the president to, in, to, to sign and the secretary to deliver, but I don't know if that's what was intended. But, but our financial policy, it's the president who signs.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sam?
Andy, good.
Yeah, good, aye, thanks.
Okay. So, I, I, if we, I'd like to talk a little bit about the process for negotiations. Just had some bumps. And Benita and I have committed with Nurya to do a lessons learned around it. I won't go into a whole lot of detail about what went on, but I think I would observe as I've thought about it, and Benita, feel free to dive in here. The communication on the city side was not as clear as it could have been. We thought, we thought we were going into an agreement that had three items in it. You know, higher, the director's role, how we interact around information and people, and extending the IGA, and we thought the county was not a signatory. And the city inserted those things without telling us. And I understand there was some briefing done on the city council, maybe, but nobody briefed us, so that was surprising. In addition, when staff looked at the numbers, there were some questions about the numbers, which I have to say somewhat cynically, doesn't surprise me. I don't think I've ever been in a city process where departments agree with one another about the numbers in the city. And then when we tried to negotiate, I felt like I was in the city's permit regulation process. Where the city, tough. And I don't think that that's what was intended. So, Benita had suggested that in future, one thing that could help would be to have David Gare, who's the lead attorney, more involved in things, and I think that's a good thought. I don't know how realistic that is, since David is retired now, he's a consultant.
Well, that's what he gets paid for as a consultant, happens.
In so many meetings. You know, the subcommittee meetings, yada, yada. Thinking about it, I wonder if, Kim, we could propose a slight variation to your process, because I know you said in your experience, just exchanging language with the attorneys works the best, but in my experience, the attorneys often act on their own initiative, and I think that's what happened here, and they're doing it out of good intent, they're trying to protect their client, the corporate city. So I wonder if at the point, when we get to the point where we have proposals, if that's a time when, I'm gonna call them the proxy decision makers, which would be Benita and me as the officers, and Chris from the city sit down in a room with the lawyers and talk through the proposals, so we clearly understand where we're coming from and where we have differences, we can have some dialogue, and then turn the attorneys loose. I feel like that might help to get the communication more clear. So.
I think that's a good idea.
You know, the only reason, I mean, I, going back to David Gare as a one individual, it, it seemed from the email communication that I was reading that he had taken it upon himself to add in certain things or to create in a certain way, and so it just seemed like nobody had communicated with him from the city side related to what we had talked with Chris and Nurya about, so that's why. I don't know if it's.
He's consulting for the city.
Yeah.
I just don't know.
He was, he was attorney, senior attorney, a lot of years.
Okay.
Recently retired.
Okay. But he's, but he's currently consulting for the city on this process, right?
Yeah. And I don't know if it means that he has to attend subcommittee meetings, but I just think he needs to be involved in at least one conversation between us to hear from this body, his representative, so before he acts on behalf of his own sense of right and wrong.
I agree with that.
And I, I mean, I agree with Johnny. I mean, in my experience with negotiating, usually you have the parties together directly. I mean, the lawyers can help at certain points a lot, if you just get the lawyers together, but I think the party needs to get together, you said, to get like agreement on the issues. It's like, what's, what really matters to the party is like, where are we really coming from, and then, you know, the lawyers can kind of hash it out, but that meeting is really important.
Yeah. And, and to back back into our process with the subcommittees, I think we had agreed last week that we'll have verbal updates each week, and then when the subcommittee reaches the point where we have a recommendation on something, we table that as an agenda item, so the board can weigh in on that. So that should be the way that we come to our sense of our proposals, positions.
Yep, I think that's a great, a great approach. The drafts, I think, narrow down the issues. Identify the things you don't need to talk about. My sense when talking to David was, we had a permit, yeah, where this was supposed to go. And maybe he talked to others, maybe he didn't, or maybe he talked to some, and maybe he didn't. But, yeah.
Good evening, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
David did land use for many years. Related to this, while we're talking about lessons learned, and why don't we take a break so we could grab some dinner? So this relates to the subcommittees, but I think also to the city's communication process. I mean, it's a big organization, and, and staff in the city, in my experience, is used to working on their own initiative, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but it can cause pickups. So last week, Doug and I had our first facilities subcommittee meeting, and we looked at the list, remember the list that Chris gave us with all the information items? And we said, you know, a number of these things have to do with ongoing maintenance. So why don't we knock those out first, see if we can meet soon, you know, like next couple of weeks, to talk through those, because those inform our budget, they don't inform the IGA, and then we'll take up the capital maintenance later. And so David contacted Lisa in the city manager's office to set up something, and over the weekend, we got a meeting invitation from Lisa that laid out the agenda, and it had a couple of very high-level things about internal costs, and then it said the backlog of capital maintenance. And so I wrote, and I said, well, no, this isn't really quite what we asked for, and I clipped from the list those items that we wanted to ongoing maintenance, and said, this is what we want to talk about now, and then these are the things we want to talk about in the future. And it sat for a day, and then they came back, Joanna came back and said, well, we're, we're really not ready to talk about those things yet, we're gonna have to reschedule. So, you know, my thoughts on this is, you know, when we talk to Chris, you know, we all need to be working off the same sheet of paper. And I think when we, as subcommittees, ask to set up a meeting, when we're ready to do that, let's work from that list. Let's pull out the things that we say we really want to hear from, so staff is prepared, we don't want to catch them short-footed, and try and be as specific as we can to try and clarify this communication and get everybody on the same page. Staff is overworked and has a ton of things to do, I get that. So I think we can make life easier for them if we're very specific.
They, it was because they didn't have the right personnel, that was why they couldn't beat this.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they thought they were going to be talking to.
Yeah, I know, I just wanna, I don't want to think they just feel like, we don't want to talk about this, because of, yeah, I mean, like.
But it was also, it'll be several weeks, we think, when we get it. So again, when we talk with Chris, let's see if we can kind of get this kind of stuff straightened out.
On this, are you, are you kind of thinking, so this is a, a tool that I use a lot, is, um, like to do a term sheet? Um, first, sort of, to discuss, to kind of outline the material terms, and then go into a draft, are you thinking send over a draft first?
I think a draft first, because the, the draft has been floated around for you right now.
Okay, okay, so then, okay, so I, I did, and so, I don't know when you get out, when you get into the room with them, and, and so you're gonna go through those, those different terms and then, and say like, oh, this is what we were thinking, and, or this is where we have agreement, Chris and Nurya, or Nurya, and I'm just kind of understanding what.
Well, I think, I, I think it'd be very helpful for Chris, for Kim to go through the city's draft, even the thing attached last spring.
Right.
As you suggested, and give us your analysis of that. We know that there are some things in there that are not necessarily where we manned up. And there are some things, as Kim said, you know, we don't have to worry about. So I think if we have that, that helps us zoom in on what the material
Yeah.
parts of disagreement are. And we need to get ourselves informed enough to be able to speak to these things. So I think this could be a tool we all have. And then, I think it's probably gonna be late July, depending on how soon information is going, before we can really sit down and start working through proposals.
Yeah.
But so we're thinking that the draft IGA will come from this board to start, that we will have a draft, this is what we think will work, and then that will go to the city, and then, then they'll sort of, that's how it'll start.
Yeah.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Sorry, Sam, you're missing out on pizza and soybeans.
That is hilarious.
Okay.
Oh, could you get me some water?
Yeah, sure, please.
And I don't want to prejudice their opinion anyway, but, you know, the the draft was shared on the, um, the Eldak, which would also be happening, also. I mean, it basically comes back to this stuff that we have pretty tall. So it's about people, about the, these backgrounds, it's about stuff, and it's about people. So, the documents are all interesting in the sense of those things that are not mentioned, and I would encourage you to put those in the court document, that turns around people. The Eldak can be drafted when it came to, says that, you know, it's the attentive district, the people are being protected. Benefits where possible, the benefits where possible, they get up. That obviously we'll have to figure out. One of the benefits, which is not, you can argue whether it's benefit, right, is the accrued. That is not mentioned in the draft, the current accrued leave library employees with the city is a good way of doctors in value. The city's policy is pretty clear, if you're paid out in cash, that you will owe the patient. And if you're paid nothing, the approved single. You'll have to make a determination of how you want to work through that. Because they don't leave, probably with a recommendation outside HR consultant, you just carry it all, you're liable for all that money without some compensation. The way the city's policy would work is whatever date the employees leave the city, you're gonna pay them out in full, without a bonus. And, you know, the practice is, it's not a policy, we know it because people retire every year. That comes out of the library's budget, so would that be construed by the city to be a cost?
Attention, the library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Would that be an option, the city pays it out, it's an operational cost, the library is. And like, actually comes to library, it's current cost in 2023. May twenty-four, you will have to make a decision about what ANC, E, you give staff. And so you could be paying twice both payout and leave, whatever that might be. It's, it's a little over $300,000, $300,000 accumulated leave, and then you're gonna turn around and and offer staff again vacation leave, assuming that they start the district. So, you know, there's no way to carry it over, there's no way for the city to compensate the district, there's no way for the, you know, you can come somewhere. So accrued leave is not in any of the documents. It'll be something that I think you have to discuss.
And sick. Accrued and sick leave?
Yeah, both accrued, yeah, accrued.
What's the current policy, like how many hours, that, is there a max hour that can?
There is a max number, I don't know what that is, on vacation. We do have buybacks every year, but for.
So, for sick leave, though, like.
No, there's no max for sick.
So you just keep accruing it forever? So you just keep accruing it forever?
Some people have.
But you don't get compensated part of your.
There's zero cash money.
Ah, zero cash money.
You used to.
Something beautiful.
A week, sorry, if you transferred that, would be taken, I'm just talking about the sick leave. If you said you carry over your sick leave, would you? Would that affect your account, would that carry over as a cash value?
It's a little over seven hundred thousand dollars in liability that you would have to be able to take sick, whether or not it's something that you want to do or not, I, I would know.
Right.
And some people have a nine, some.
It's a liability, but it's not a cash.
Yeah, I don't think it's a cash change. The state requires at least a sick leave.
Yeah.
Every year. And so whether, whether it accrues or not, that's not something that the state takes for the out. So you won't be providing them, for those people with zero, you'll be providing forty hours of sick leave or whatever it is you decide in the benefits package. For those that have a thousand hours of sick leave, you may be assuming the responsibility for that person to be able to take a pause. It's not coming in any of the drafts, you need to think about what you want to do.
How is this, the new state, is it parental leave, what is the leave policy that we pay into?
Family.
Family.
We haven't decided whether we're going to opt in or out of that yet, but. Yeah.
Has the, has the city?
The city. City opted out.
Out?
Out. Opted out.
City opted out, the county has opted out. Because I think, my guess is, um, is that our benefits will be better than what the state offers. In medical, family health leave. So, but they have a tax, but they won't necessarily get the benefit of it, but they'll have a benefit probably better.
Right, because that's the only way you can opt out, right?
No.
If you, if you offer at least what the law requires. And just offer less.
The city's family, you have to pay back this fairly. Yeah, so people, there's a lot of stuff to do, salary and. Titles, that kind of stuff, that's all something factored in. How you will manage that liability, a million dollars in your sick vacation. And the sick leave, I don't remember the exact number, it's in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars. And while light, as has the city, the district, some form of long-term, short-term disability programs, those are now required in the city. So whether or not, what, what instance someone could need a thousand hours of sick time is, it's not, it's not clear to me. That would happen, would you need a thousand hours if the, if the, if the district has a long-term and short-term disability program? And obviously that is made in that chart. Buildings and grounds is fairly well covered. Question really is the degree to which we can ever employ. The maintenance faculty. I don't know, you know, I've had, talked to a bunch of consultants at this point. Some of them looked at all the data extensively and they said like, nah, we don't have time. And so, and then the city, obviously it says they don't have a person, but even for the short term. Short term stuff, I believe we already have fairly decent data, looking around the lot like that. General costs that we put in each year, general operational maintenance. City will have to kind of verify that, it's wise for you to come and do it. It's not something that's printed anywhere in the budget, I think they ought to be able to run the spreadsheets. I've seen such spreadsheets in the past, the costs associated with general maintenance, operational maintenance occurring annually here that should be a part of the unit. Those, those are things that you're not going to ask back, city, which is a general, what's your cost per month, what's your budget? So if this basis we put in, a half million dollars expected years from. For grounds, we never got, we never, there was ballpark estimates, the branches, square footage, stuff like that that came to around three forty, three fifty. Not knowing what the arrangement would be for grounds. There was a lot of discussion about the grounds around the main library, the Eldac became very complicated. So I think you're going to want to think about how much of the grounds we want to be responsible. Because likely, not the agreements, we create the land or the building to the district. There's all lease agreement down here. Kind of building towards some kind of shared co-op agreement where the district would agree to pay some maintenance cost for the grounds. I'm not sure, there's good data on that either, having been with that committee in the city for a number of years. The Parks and the Earth Department is nowhere close to best practices in terms of the. Stuff was never complicated, and I, and I don't know that it will become complicated in the IGA. It's like the way they describe it is pick up all the buildings and ship them, all the stuff that falls out, what do you do with that? But I don't think the city really cares about, but what was not discussed in the case of stuff, and it's very important, is data. It's not, you pick up the building, it didn't fall out, you know, shake it out, it's somewhere in a cloud. I don't know if we have five terabytes of data or eight, but we have three or ten. But that will factor very heavily into the cost of general operational costs or what we do in terms of running the district. Also access to data, right? Like so, the migration of all that data is going to be a big chunk of change that you guys are going to wind up paying some. I don't think there's any way around that, like you really need to know that you have access to it to a certain extent, ownership of the data. Because like some people have twenty years of. Stuff, all in the cloud, so who won't? And that's something that is not in any one of the draft agreements, but I think you're going to have to have that discussion of, you know, clear lines of minimum access to a certain ownership. We'll probably replicate most of the software platforms that the city does, Microsoft three sixty-five, Teams, Share, all those things will probably replicate for the, the same reason we went with the bank, right? It's the ease of transition for all the staff and we do not have the time to train them on how to use Google Books, right? Between October and January. So we're going to be with the same products, but all the data that's stored currently within the city, intermingled, we have to decouple. That's going to be a major cost for the district in twenty twenty-three, do so. We'll have a bid for that, scope of work by whatever, August and October, to execute until October, so I'm seeing IGA stuff. And the other one is money, which I know it comes up and, you know, I always think when we talk about money is the money that's in our accounts. And I can tell you that most of the accounts that the library has, the accounts that the city's, most of them have been drained down to zero because of. Almost all of, even the gift fund is accounted for in the budget this year. So we don't have access to it this year, but it will revert back to the district in a second. When we move, when the district becomes real and see the money, we'll come back. But I think really the money issue is how much do we owe, right, how much do we owe? And so that wasn't discussed in the first draft, it was somewhat discussed in the Eldac and briefly came up in your temporary agreement. You know, we can all kind of agree that the general fund budget of the library is around nine million, nine point two, something like that. There's always a capital expenditure that will be paid back when the capital is going to churn to twenty-three, that's probably around a million. And then there's another thing which we refer to in the city, it's not parrot, getting even a mind budget, but it is internal cost allocation. So internal cost allocation is not a real number, it's a number that auditor determines every two years when they come to the city. And evaluate, how do we explain bureaucracy, the, all the machinery, all the internal services that make the city run to the taxpayers? And so when the auditor sits down, he probably has a formula, I don't know the auditor, I've never met them, but they go through a formula that distributes that. How much IT stuff do we have, how many buildings do we have, how much square footage was the traffic? How much legal, and then they divide it up and move all the city departments. So we're all designated with an amount for an internal cost allocation, which is typically has been between three point two and three point four million dollars. Of which, I don't believe there are any receipts with the exception of attorneys who track everything. When we ask for the attorney to do something, they, they're tracking it all. Otherwise, finance, HR, IT, whatever, some of the others, right? City manager's office, all of us are a portion, a bit of their budget. But, you know, what, what is, do you, do you just directly agree to pay that three point two, three point four million back to the city? We need to have now financial responsibility for the district and auditor's formula and the receipts.
Can I chime in on that? Another question and a comment. My recollection during Eldac was that. Like one point eight million of that three million was facilities.
Point four.
One point four, okay.
Seven hundred is IT.
And seven hundred is IT, and that is mostly contracts. Which the city would not hold anymore, those are contracts that would transfer over to the library district if we were actually picking them up, right?
Okay, so how does Kiki software and the tax part they give us as well? Other biggie is communications, David, I don't know if you mentioned that one?
I didn't know, so communications is another one, which I think the cost.
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean. We do have a liaison, the jobs we're making for most of the year, I think there's a bit now, this term. The deputy director of communications did manage our newsletter to some extent. And, you know, I think he did a press release this year. And typically what we even get from him is a press release every four to six weeks as well as the. And they're not writing the content, so that's done by staff. Software system. So some of the costs are, you know, it's an auditor, there's spec, there's a formula, right? I don't want to disparage the costs since.
Yeah.
So back to the one point four, because the other piece then, there's also the replacement funds that the library pays into. And so actual capital expenditures, big ticket expenditures for maintenance come out of the funds that the library pays for out of its budget, right? So there's an aspect of kind of double counting there that has always bothered me. You know, I don't think the city is spending one point four billion facilities, especially since things like bathrooms probably came out of the Far Far Fund. And there's also a fund for IT. So it gets pretty complicated when you get down into that. We don't know if the city really intends to try and collect for cost allocation, that's a question. The reasons why we pushed back on categories. That's a, I'm going to ask Chris a question.
Yeah, it's the city, it's kind of a precious year, but you know, I was saying the city's going to do issue. The three point four or three point two that was in this temporary IGA that you were doing, it's a huge surprise to me. Right, when I brought it last week, I was like, where did, I was asking Kim, where did this come from? Because the city has given no education in time, they want to collect on the internal cost allocation, there may be some causes. I can't, we're going to pay this off. But I don't, you know, the formula that the auditor uses, that's me available, I don't know, I've never seen it. There is, it's an auditor every two years.
I think it's, it's like a, it's, I think it's based on sort of like a, kind of like, yeah, I don't know if they call it general accounting, press practices. And probably, because I've seen it also at the university. You know, like in the athletic department, they get allocated a portion of the, you know, services. They're ninety, hundred million dollar budget, I think, probably eight million, eight million. I get, anyway.
Well, depending on what you want.
Yeah.
The assumption is going forward in twenty twenty-four, you will have to see a budget for facilities.
Yeah.
Which is the library running it, maintaining it, and achieving intent, right? And so also for IT and communications and all of these things will be aligned in the budget. You know exactly what the costs were, we'll be able to show you receipts, expenditures having to do with the salaries and stuff that goes into that. And that will be in the wheelhouse, right? Three point four million dollars is maybe as well.
Yeah, if, if you include facilities, yeah.
Because we anticipate capital expenses around facilities maintenance. Things like the issues that have not been addressed, I don't know.
So back to our process then. I think, you know, Kim, if you can mark up the city's draft, because effectively the city has already done a first draft in what they submitted to council last spring. And if you could do that and also note some of these things that David mentioned are not in here that we have to address. And then I think it's incumbent on us in our subcommittee rooms to get these meetings scheduled as quickly as we can with city and library staff. When Chris' message goes back, it should be easier, I'm guessing that won't be until after the Fourth of July that we can really connect with that, David. I, I mean, you think, he said he was gone for three weeks and.
Yeah, he'll be back in early July.
So, you know, if we really want to get this IGA completed and in council's hands by October, that means we need to have it done by September. That really just kind of gives us August, September time, assuming we're on speed on all these issues in between. And I think the IT things we had agreed with the library as before, so we should probably look at trying to get those scheduled sooner rather than later. Although some of this may also relate to when we went the consultants on board, right? Because I think IT and finance, you thought, I mean, those are in part to advise us on the IGA's, right? So the finances now.
So these costs, really, so if you decide a really amazing benefits package and plus, you're going to bring over seven hundred thousand dollars of accrued sick leave, what's the amount?
Budget.
Fifteen years, I'm assuming. In, in the course of the IGA, there's a fee of back the data, we can plug that in the modeling efficiency with the impact is on the overall budget. And the overall physical health of the district, right? That's the intent of the financials, is to be able to easily plug in numbers that, there's, you know, variables within it, so you can say like, okay. If this, then now we have this amount of money left over to spend in IT, in facilities maintenance, or like. So you can ballpark this by making some of those decisions.
How many staff does the library employ?
Yeah, including subs, we're probably at about a hundred and twenty. The FTE count, I believe, is around eighty-two, am I right, gentlemen? Eighty, eighty, eighty.
Eighty.
FTE, all kinds of ones. We have a, we have a budget for subs, and so we employ people there, the city refers to them as temporary employees. We highly rely on substitutes to keep the library open, because we're only for whatever sixty-two hours a week.
Right.
It's a, it's a substitution. And they come out of the city, they're blocked at the city wage, they, that they approve, they will submit all of your benefits, everything. Obviously, if anybody would work for a period of time for one thirty hours over the course of like nine weeks or twelve, we owe them that full benefits package.
But they, like, work for the city and they just don't always work for the library, is that?
No, they work for the library, library subs for the library too.
Kind of like temp, temp, temp.
Yeah, say he's a pilot, his temp's all of this, parks and, and the open space or, it's just that. To the tune of, I don't know how many hours a year, but the, the budget currently is around a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Going back to processes. How do you want to, how do you feel about, how are you going to break this up, I guess? Sounds like he's going to mark up a first draft. Um, are you intending to? I guess for the owing, owing amount, it might be the who of us as a, as a board to start putting together. You know, not specific line item, it looks like schools of toilet paper, but categories of kind of like what was in the original? in the original, but for our own accounting, right? Like to, you know, I guess we don't know what they're going to come back with, but.
I think that's the first question.
Yes.
Is to talk to Chris and Nurya and say, are we talking about general fund operating costs?
Yeah.
Are we, are we talking about allocation? That's another.
Yeah.
You know, from our conversations with them, they don't particularly want to get down into the weeds. They were, you know, Chris said, well, I think we just do the budget that the city asked for 2023.
Right, but that didn't include, like, that doesn't probably.
It doesn't include the cost allocation, so that's what we need to clarify, so. So, you know, there's some pieces around that to clarify, but I, I think that would be a good starting point. I think we need to get educated.
Yeah.
On these numbers for the budget, and I think the budget finding committee will be doing that.
Right. Yeah, specifically on, like, leave, like, what's, can you accumulate endless leave, or is they, do they stop letting you accumulate after a certain amount of time, or?
Vacation leave is like something like 360 hours.
So after 360 hours?
Forfeit it.
You forfeit it?
You buy backs, the city offers to buy backs.
And you get.
But you have to apply for it.
And you get how many a year? You have four weeks or whatever.
Um, about, it depends on how long you work for the city, you accumulate more the longer you've worked here.
Yeah.
Um, but like on the upper end, it's like four weeks, four or five weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Three to five weeks. They, do you accumulate that monthly or per paycheck, or is it?
Every paycheck you get a certain amount.
Like 2.67 hours?
Yeah, same for sick leave.
Okay.
And they also give us 24 floating holiday hours, which we can use during that year, but then they, if you don't use them, you lose them.
They use those first. That's how, that's how you take your birthday off.
You'd be surprised, though, if one of you comes up, um, just, I think.
Yeah. Well, not everyone likes to take off.
Okay, where are we? So one other question about this notion of, you know, getting the proxy decision makers in the room. I'm assuming David can be in those conferences, because that's not going to be an executive session if we're talking to them, right? And I'm also assuming that that can only be two of us, because otherwise it would be. Okay. Good. Well. Okay, then.
I was looking through materials, and so you did share this with us, right? And so this does, just as a reminder to folks that it does have the listing of the issues that you raised. Yeah, so that's helpful. And then somewhere there was, I thought we had asked for a copy, I just don't, I just can't find it, maybe this is it, but related to seeing the elements of the IGA, right, that in each one of those sections. And you gave that to us, Kim, I think, right, as a, so I just wanted to go, because I was thinking that what you were asking for from him sort of plays off of what we had asked, I had thought I had asked from the beginning, but I was looking for that document, do you know?
Kim gave us the example IGA that he provided to city council four years ago, that's based on the final report. Then I gave you something that was a plain English explanation.
For each section that what needed in there?
That was in a second package.
Okay.
And I can send it to you.
No, 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 I'm probably sure I have it here, but I was just thinking that that could be helpful to reference as it relates to what you were asking.
But it doesn't get into the things David talks about that are not identified. And then the city has gone through a couple of versions of its own IGA and presented those to council. Council has never reviewed them, approved them.
Have we, have you seen them?
Yeah, there's.
Oh, okay.
So, so there was one presented with the Eldac packet with the resolution last spring. And that one, even though that didn't review the IGA, that was just, that just came from the city. And that's the one you're talking about starting. So that represents what we think is the current latest position they put together.
Okay.
I think a helpful way to frame out. To kind of see where they're coming from first, and then, you know, kind of overlay our stuff. I guess something I'd like to see, the draft circulated, and then how that plays into the budget that, that this spreadsheet that we needed put up, so this option, this option. Um, I, I'm a little, I, I guess a little confused, I guess, on one instance, it's like, if we take an allocation, as we're calling them, allocations, we might call it, like, I mean, like, for the leave or something, for sick leave or, or even, you know, is that just a liability that we carry on our books as a, as a liability, it's not really affecting? I mean, there's, we're not going to assume everyone's going to take the whole, you know, six, you know, thousand hours at one time, like, we wouldn't probably accrue all three quarters of a million in sick leave in one year.
But if you set a policy, if you agreed to a policy of 1,000 hours.
Right.
If you set a policy where sick leave, even if that's sick leave, maxed out at a certain amount, you're going to create a natural basis. Because somebody's not going to be, the new employee is not going to be able to get to the 1,000 hours now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I, I don't think you want to replicate with.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just saying.
I think you're trying to figure out a money piece.
I'm just trying to figure out the money piece, I don't, I don't.
A money piece.
How, like, how does that look on a budget? Yeah.
Money piece.
It's a liability, right?
It's something you'd see played out over a period of time, 10, 15 years. Because you'd make an assumption of each year, how much you're paying out.
Yeah, it's just an accounting. And, and you.
So it wouldn't be something one, it would be one scenario, just have bigger numbers.
Right.
Depending on.
So that's what I'm trying to say, is like, when we make changes to the IGA, or we need the corresponding budget projections.
Where they're finding, right? So the ones that I'm saying are mostly binding are
Yeah.
the crew lead is a, is one that's, no, not that's better, but the other side, we could, but one, we just don't know. Is the maintenance, so that's one that I'm not sure we're going to be able to handle on the context of the IGA, so. So we've paid for what.
But I think this is what, one of the things the financial consultant is going to do, right? Have the model and be able to run different scenarios to, so this much for maintenance, this is what it looks like. This much for need, this is what it looks like. So we'll be able to do some comparisons of the impact.
Yeah, that's right.
Of the library district, don't time based on this financial. And the model exists, they just need to update it and bring it into, into frame.
I mean, there's even architects and stuff that, that can predict, like, that, they have like baseline numbers for buildings, so hey, you have a, you know, 5,000 square foot warehouse, you know, make the, they'll estimate maintenance in year 1, 2, 5, 7, 10.
They do it by square foot, I see, yeah. This is a similar problem, because we are not at a level of expense that I think you are necessarily going to accept. So I am assuming that the dollar amount is, we've seen what best practice is, and we know approximately what the city spends. There's, there's a difference, that's, that's just the facilities master plan, if you want to read it. The city passed the facilities master plan, I think in 2020, I'm sure it was 2002. It's a really good read, if you want to get an idea of the condition of buildings within the city.
Yeah.
We're not mentioned in there very often, because they do pick the number of buildings that they're going to work on, to be. And, but each building, I think, is given a grade, it's not that documented, I don't know the places, but you know, like the main library, the AP, uh, you know, I think Reynolds is a C and Carnegie is a D. So, you know, if that's, if that's all you need, then we can supply that information, but I think you're up to it.
Really in the mix right now.
I know, sorry. We don't need to get that.
Yeah, so this is really a facility discussion.
All right, we'll go back to that. All right.
Yeah, so is there anything else pressing on the IGA, Sam, is there anything you want to raise? It's hard to try to get your voice in here.
Yeah, I'm okay. I can't hear everybody, so I'm not tracking quite fully, but I don't have any burning questions right now.
Okay, great. Well, then I think that takes us to subcommittee updates. Um, anybody have anything they wanted to report this last week?
Well, relative to some of the discussion just now, Jen and I met with David in our first staffing subcommittee, and we have scheduled three of the key, so David has scheduled for us three of the key city staffers to join us at our June 28 meeting. That's the head of HR, the CFO, and the city budget director. So that we can, you know, get a, get the best handle possible on the current compensation and benefits, inform ourselves about para, and, you know, pepper them with any questions that I think any of you might have. I know we're trying to do this efficiently, and we're in subcommittees for a reason, but I really want to be sure that any other trustees who have questions related to staffing get them answered. So maybe the best way to do that, short of creating another open meeting, would be for you to share any questions with, with Jen and I prior to, prior to next Wednesday, sorry, prior to Wednesday, the 28th. So that's, I guess that's kind of the staffing subcommittee update.
That's great. And Sam, did you want to talk a little bit about what you and I discussed on, on you leading the discussion on Thursday with the staff, because that's the other thing we have coming up.
Right.
15.
Yeah, so.
Are you going to be able to be there?
Yeah, I, I should be barring any last minute changes to my wife's condition. Yeah, I'm planning to be there, and, and I think what Johnny and I had, had talked about was after she makes some remarks, you know, I can just say, hey, I'm who I am, and Jen, who can't be with us, but who I think will be on the phone. Um, we are the staffing subcommittee, and, and as a way of just getting a, a handle on how people are feeling about this transition, could we do a quick exercise based around a prompt that many of us are familiar with from other meetings during times of change and transition? Before we get to the question and answer section, it would be really helpful to me as a trustee, and I think to my fellow trustees, to hear from you about your, your worst fears and your best hopes during this time of transition. So then that's a prompt that we just quickly go around, and anybody who wants to can share what, what is really freaking them out about this, and, and what, what is really inspiring them. So where I come from, we call it worst fears, best hopes. You may have done this exercise by a different name, but that was the thought, to, to have everybody who, who wants to do a quick share based on that prompt.
So do we have, we would have microphones set up, or people would just speak their outside voice inside? Do you want that working there?
I, I.
I just wonder about logistics about that.
Yeah, I don't know, Benita, I think that was Benita.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with outside voice and listening, but that might not work for everybody, so I would defer to David and Jennifer on that particular piece of it. Does everybody, is everybody okay? I think it's, it's useful to me to just really get, and I think it works better than in some ways than listening to the questions and responding to the questions people ask, those are important too, obviously, but I'd like to sort of get, get those things out for us to hear, at least from those who are willing to offer them. But if, if people are uncomfortable with that as an exercise, we don't, we don't have to do it.
No, I just had a couple other related questions. So I wondered if you've ever, if it's the optimist in me, do you ever start with the positive? Instead of worst fears?
I, I can go either way.
Okay. I just like, sorry, with positive and, and angling from that. And so does each person, so you do, it's a two-part question, and so people are just coming up and saying, you know, best, you know, hope is this and fear is this? And then they sit down?
That, that is one way to do it, the other way is to go around just with the, you know, the hope, then everybody goes around with the fear. I've, I've done it both ways. I think maybe it's a little more efficient to try to combine them, and people can be a little more succinct, but.
And then are we, are we recording these? Are we, I mean, putting, no, no, I don't mean like record, I mean, charting them? You know, in a flip chart, just what words people say? Okay, because I'd be happy to do that.
We have to, Steph.
We'd like to, okay.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I do think it's important to record them, and so thanks for whoever said they'll do the flip chart.
Yeah.
I just have a question about, so there will be the staff, and then we will be there, and potentially some members of the library commission will be there. Um, is there, are there any other groups of people? It might be helpful to sort of set the stage at the beginning to just kind of explain what we're doing. Um, you know, emphasizing that we're here mostly to listen and to try to absorb how they're feeling, so that, you know, we can, we can build from that. So that way it doesn't turn into, you know, like, maybe some pressing questions of staff that aren't necessary or like really productive in that moment. I don't know if that's something maybe you could do at the beginning?
So I think, I, it's our understanding that Nurya is going to open this
Okay.
with that kind of a message.
Okay, perfect.
That we are all interested in a seamless transition and yada, and then I'll chime in with similar kind of things, we want to hear from you. Okay, tell them the survey that's going to go out, turn it over to David to talk about what we're going to be doing, what this team, if it looks like, we've got a big chart, a timeline that lays that out, emphasizing the places they need input. Um, Jamie's going to talk a little bit about the survey, what we'll be doing out next week, which is the first step. And then we turn it over to Sam, sweet, and it's their meeting, that's.
Questions at a time, and we'll have that to you.
Okay. You all saw those F A Qs that they shared from previously.
Yes.
And the questions I received are not different.
So, okay, so the, this hopes and fears piece of it happens after these intros and presentations, and will the trustees be introduced?
Yes, I think the trustees should be introduced, and I think if there are library commission members, we should introduce them as well. Um, just so people know who's in the room.
And so where are we in the room? Are we sitting together? Are we on the stage? Or what? Okay, that's right, so is it?
So we just, tables and chairs, we can set it up however we'd like. We can just have all chairs and open them up front and the screen on, and we'll have two staff members that will moderate the participants online. How would you like it?
Probably a third of the staff will be in, a third will be online, and another third will watch it on tape.
And we're serving lunch, so we might want to have tables, so people can.
So I think something that's informal that has us facing them probably makes the most sense in my mind.
Yeah, so maybe, you know, like one table, sort of panel-like on the end there.
Yeah, to be fun.
To the room that just flooded?
I, I, I fully expected it to flood that day.
So we think it'll be like 30, you know, 25 people on.
25 people in the room, and probably another 20, 25 online.
Okay.
And then another 20, 25.
Okay.
And, you know, we've seen the written questions at the time, you'll get them, you guys get them. Their point, they're asking you to make a decision on significant things, right? You know, I don't, I don't think you want to do that.
So any other subcommittee reports? Not ours.
And do we think back, before we close on this, it's one hour or an hour and a half? It's an hour and a half, okay. I'm just thinking through, like, just in my head, the timing of stuff, and just making sure we're allowing enough time for any questions and dialogue and all of that, so.
An hour was so that any staff members who are on the desk can join at least the end of the meeting.
I'll probably have to drop off a little early.
The, the exercise might take up some time, it might, not, just like, say, five or six or seven. I don't know, I don't know if we'll have the time to go through.
Maybe we want to cut them off, it's kind of their meeting.
Okay, all right.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, though, if you started, though.
You know, it could, could burn up a lot of time.
We all have confidence in Sam, he's, he's.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got it.
And you'd handle the in-person and then people online to share the same, and. Now just be careful, I'm just, just want to make sure, because I, what I wonder about is what the value of of the hopes and fears? You know, or is that going to sound, I mean, is it? I just want to make sure it is of value to them, in a sense, and I don't know the audience well enough to know that. But, you know, are we just putting them through a little exercise and making people, some people uncomfortable, right? But, you know, are we just putting them through a little exercise and making people, some people uncomfortable, right? And just, you know?
But nobody is going to have to participate. It's only going to go one person at a time and like make everything, it's just what we want. If you want to participate.
Okay, if anybody wants to share, okay.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, as long as that's the case and, you know, anybody want to share?
When it sounded to me, it sounded like the notion was, we know there can be people who are finding particular things. This was a way of maybe opening up space before we go into that. So that people who weren't necessarily there with a particular agenda might have a way that they can talk about their issues without saying, I want this benefit or I want that thing.
My assumption is, I hope you're saying is after a few, like, most people probably have the same. So my guess is, you know, you'll be like, okay, well, mine was always said, I might not do again.
That's, that's partly, I think, really interesting.
Yeah.
Because the fears are in some ways also expressed between the words of all the questions here.
Yeah.
So you'll see that when we provide you with the answers. And some say you see that in the observations there, you see what fear and uncertainty there is. They want some certainty around things and you'll see that lead, right? They'd rather have certainty tomorrow or Thursday, but we haven't been red them for that much. That's why.
I think we just need to be empathetic to that and tell them, we're really committed to doing this as fast as we can.
Yep.
And we have managed those expectations too. They're eager to know, but they know, you may not have the answers to these questions.
I'm hoping that just seeing us as real people and being able to respond that way will help them. Because ciphers, right?
And they are super excited, they believe I heard a lot of times, they think this is an awesome person. They're, that, that is a good, they take that as a good sign. And honestly, we never really had the whole, like, we were not able to talk to city employees. So we had a meeting that was not a public meeting, but a, you know, where staff did express their gratitude and how excited they were, but we've never really done it in that setting at a meeting. We did it in a, in another setting where it was great, it was fabulous, but, yeah, we got the opportunity. Using the day of the election, the thing was, music was blared in the background. People were dancing and not on desk. So stuff was going on, you could tell people were happy about something about it, but, you know, what exactly they were happy about?
Yeah, good. So can we make sure we have our nameplates there?
Yep.
And then, I don't think that there was an expectation that the library commission members who were interested in this meeting, I invited them at our last meeting last week. You know, we're going to be there for anything more than to be observing. So they're not sitting, sitting with us and panel and all that. Okay. But they would be acknowledged as being there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm comfortable, Sam, I'm comfortable with your plan too, so thank you.
Oh, sure. Yeah. And it's totally voluntary, yeah.
Yeah.
So the meeting will be open to the public. If you know people who are above the public or there, I'm going to call them out as well. Welcome to them, something like that. That will be something that I think the staff are not there.
Yeah.
Typically, our staff, these are what we do, we're not, it's a public, kitchens.
Yes.
The other thing I would ask you to do is that if you get the written questions and choose to read questions aloud submitted, please do not abbreviate, please do not change the words. These people spend time to think through the questions. So they put everything that they wanted to. So if you're going to read it, you don't have to say do that, but if you do, don't change the words, do not abbreviate. We've had that experience before, we're outside. It did not go well, I can take.
Sam, can you hear David?
Yeah, a question should be read verbatim. I completely agree with that. Don't attempt to edit because you might change the meaning or leave out key details that the person really wanted said. Yeah.
See, New York Times editorial on twenty-first century editors editing twentieth century literature yesterday, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, we need to poo, right? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, Winnie the Pooh was one of, yeah, there were a whole bunch of things that they were talking about, how they changed it and totally changed the meaning. So, okay, so I have one thought, communications. You know, we've talked about sort of commemorating things and such. And I know you guys are working on a plan for outreach and engagement around the budget, which is great. What do you think about targeting something for the end of the year when the transition really occurs? To make that the time when we do something that is commemorative, celebratory? I mean, that's when we'll really have the milestone, something different has happened, something that we can talk with people about. And that might be a time to do a story or whatever. I don't know, David, if you've given a thought to whether we're changing the logo for the library.
That's not much of a cost.
Yeah, so we could add an end to the year, but I went up thinking, I mean, there are many different pieces along the way for engagement and.
Yeah, I'm very skeptical that people are going to want to engage. I mean, I had breakfast with Michael and Marcia Kaplan last weekend and some of you know them. They are, you know, longtime library stalwarts. They were people who founded the library gym, but they aren't interested in what we're doing. They just want to see the results.
Yeah.
And I think that's going to be true for most folks. You know, this setup stuff is not exciting.
So one suggestion that came from a member of the library commission at our meeting was that we at least consider sort of a tier-one regular communication group. It would include library commission, foundation and, what was the third group? Remember the third group? And LDAC, LDAC members, is three, like, sort of key stakeholders and at least be sharing information with them. They wouldn't have to, you know, sort of dig for it or whatever and just to be, you know, on a friendly communication term with sort of a tier-one of stakeholders as it relates to the library.
How is it different than our website?
Well, that's posting it. So this would be a more active engagement from our side, that it might be, you know, creating a lists, a listserv and sending an update to them or using, you know, a constant contact account. And they could opt out of it if they didn't want to receive it, but it would just be sort of a offer of, you know, thinking about you, you played a role, you provided some leadership and direction in, as it relates to this and we thought you'd be interested in knowing what we're doing.
I think the subcommittee meeting put a lot of direction, but I think it was good. And I think there was partly a desire of the subcommittee that the board introduced themselves in some ways in the community so that, and we can do that, I think, in the right way and such that, like, you know, even a story like, they listen to the staff. Like, that's a story which we can probably craft a press release around, talk a little bit about, hey, this thing is getting started. There's a second way that we could do it around, you know, a little bit more elaborate than the bios, but perhaps introducing some trustee through a pay and talk about their passions about the library, why they're into all of this, that then the community could get a sense that these are trust. And at the same time, we could highlight that they're volunteers and volunteers are an important part of the library operation. You like to volunteer for something as well. So we craft them in a way that introduces the board to the community and begins to tell us a story about the way you want to be, I think, what I heard was accessible and how you want to be, you know, disposed towards the community, right? So I think that is a message which could probably last us for three months without anything specifically on the IGA. I've invited the communications people to come to the meeting, you have the link to listen, get a sense of what it is and then, as you imagine, that we decide to go this route we can reach out to a couple of you for an interview about, hey, why are you doing this? So then they can write a release or write a story and something like that and goes out to the press. And then they might, the press might pick up those stories. If they're around the daily camera, they won't. But in the long run, I think what I've heard from the subcommittee is that there's a desire from the library to position itself slightly differently than the way the city has done. So I don't think that's a logo, I think it comes down to all of us and how we do the budget. All of those things will be imperative to setting a different kind of precedent for how we interact with the community. That the city doesn't do a lot of marketing. The communications department is built out of engagement department over the last two or three years, but prior to that was really a push organization, we pushed information out. And so I think we want to position ourselves maybe slightly differently than that. And I think in order to do that, we're going to have a plan. It's not something I planned on for that. Even though a consultant will get an RFP ready to go sometime before the end of this year to get out. So by the twenty twenty-five, when you're making a budget decision, you can budget for the full-blown community communications, marketing, engagement plan that we can then, there's a small amount that we put into communications for the twenty twenty-four budget, but it's not getting factored in, like, engagement. We can change the marketing budget, which is nothing because the city doesn't do marketing. But I think we probably need all of that. I mean, if, if you are not telling your story, then somebody else will. So, you know, the narrative about we're being double taxed is out there, right? I hear it almost every other day. So, you know, we're not going to be able to get that story, but how do you want to craft the narrative about what the library is doing about that? You'll have the opportunity, I think, to do that. But we need, we need help. We can do some things with communications that we currently have. There was discussion as to whether we might put a piece in the newsletter, which goes out to forty-four thousand people every two weeks.
Yeah.
Do you want to do something every month?
That's what we were planning to do.
Feature a small thing that has a link to a story. So there's ways for you to do it in the current complex of our current budget. And the expectation, the expectation will be that our communications liaison and the communications department houses with that. Outside of that, we don't have any resources for twenty twenty-three to bill much. We can hire a consultant, we get them to build a plan. The plan then would be something we backed up in twenty twenty-four.
And we can talk about in that subcommittee context, what we can do without money. And so something commemorative feels like something that we could do without money. And then it also feels like something like, that you're talking about, like, small scale communication is something that's the best could work on. Pieces in newsletters, I think we can work on. So I think we can drill down on that more as we start to meet more.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, did everybody get their bios in? Missing bios from anyone?
I, I have.
Get your I O S.
I have to get mine too. Sorry, I have a funny deal.
Yeah.
It'll be tomorrow.
Sending the bios to, sorry?
You already did yours, Sam.
I did, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did, yeah, and I forwarded it to you.
Do you?
Oh, great.
Yeah, if I can dig it out if you, if.
I think you sent it to Johnny.
I have it. If you sent it to me.
Yeah, I forwarded it to you.
I don't think you did.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
No, I did not. I have not, I know, I.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. It'll be tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? We're down to trustee matters. Good, big steps forward tonight, guys. It's great. We are adjourned.
I guess.
Plan for.
Let us know Thursday night if there's any hiccups in our consent.